The time is now 7:00 PM and the regular meeting for the Town of Loray Council is called to order. Please join me in a moment of silence. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Danielle, will you please call the role?
Yes, Mayor Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Mr. Dolph Lamar? Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Butler?
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions from the agenda for tonight? Here on consent agenda?
Mayor, I'm going to approve the final consent agenda. The minutes of the regular council meeting on February 10th, the minutes of the work session on February 25th, the financial reports meeting on February 28th, 2025, and the council payable totaling $297,796.78.
Second.
Danielle?
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is general citizen comment period. We have one individual signed to speak, Ms. Susan Corbett. Would you like to come up, please? If you will, just for the record, state your name and address.
Susan Corbett, 397 Riverbend Road, Stanley, Virginia.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to give you an update on the creek situation. I'm not letting that go, but some things have happened that I think are going to help us. So the riverkeeper, the Shenandoah Riverkeeper worked with the agricultural department and they have filed a complaint targeting farmers who let their cows stand in the creek in the summertime. And so, working through the ag department, that complaint will go to the commissioner and then over time, hopefully, he will make a decision that will require those farmers to come up with a plan to move the cows out of the water. And I have noticed that, and I'm not going to remember his name right now, the property right closest to the market there, they've already started erecting a fence. So that's a good sign. So hopefully, they're the ones that are closest to the waterway, to the greenway. So hopefully, and it's going to take some time, and in the meantime, I'm going to continue to pay for testing. And I want the town to be aware that when the numbers come up really high, I won't be here complaining that we can't do letting little kids get in that water because it's like you wouldn't let your kids play in the toilet and that's basically what you're doing. So I will be back. But there is progress that's being made on that. And hopefully, if the agricultural department continues with their cost share programs, who knows, but farmers like me, which I'm doing it, will still be able to get compensated for making these actions. You get the grants and the programs that paid for the fencing, most of it, not 100% of most of it. The other thing I'm going to tell you, I've still got this ongoing thing with Mr. Greer. He would not get his HVAC units off of my property. So I had to go to court and spend a whole bunch more money and had to drag the chief into it. But it finally got moved and I slapped him with another lien. So he has a lot of liens on that property and that judgment set have been put against him. And still no movement on that property thing. And I'm kind of waiting on 44 East Main because I hate to commit myself to doing something with that building until I can see whether I can get ahold of a restaurant because I want to open a restaurant there as sports bar. That's what I want to do. But, you know, so I'm just kind of sitting on it. I don't mean to leave a property empty downtown. I don't like that. But I hate to commit myself to doing something until we see down the road if we will call public auction on that property. And then I will do my best to get it and develop it. So that's where we are with that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. Any council response, questions, comments for Ms. Corbett?
Ms. Corbett, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
On the creek, has DEQ actually done any investigation on that?
There are multiple years' worth of record keeping on that creek and it's a impairment yes.
Okay.
Before you came on and welcome to the council.
Thank you.
Last year, I presented a great deal of evidence to the council on all the testing and an impairment plan that was together that was really never carried out, partly because it's hard to get farmers to change their practices.
Yeah, but the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, have they actually launched an investigation?
No, they don't investigate. That's not what they do. They have declared it impaired.
Okay.
And the impairment is primarily coming from cows. There's other things involved that is primarily cows.
But I have a question. I always thought it seemed like the county should be more concerned about this than us because they had, but are you talking to the county also?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
Because the county's the only one that can really do anything about it. I mean, but the town, what I'm requesting for you is that you be careful about allowing people to get into that water.
There were signs posted. I remember that.
I know the town can't. The county, definitely. And that's why we had to go to the riverkeeper and start the process with the commissioner of agriculture.
Okay.
Kind of call these farmers' attention to the problems. You've got to do something.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your continued work and advocacy with that. Okay, moving on, let's see, boards, commissions, and department reports. Loray Downtown, Ms. Jackie Elliott.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Just a couple of things. We've already started working. We've had our first Sunflower Festival meeting, so we've already started working on that. And we're looking at adding some new components to that because, you know, we're trying to evolve that more and more every year because it's becoming more and more popular. Jennifer shared with us that she received a phone call from a lady from North Carolina inquiring about it. She's planning her vacation around it. So it's kind of nice to hear those types of things. Virginia Main Street will be here Thursday. They will be meeting with me first thing at Broad Porch at 9:00 AM. From there, we are going to be walking Main Street. We're going to be talking about the various grants that are going to be coming available for '26. We're going to be talking about the rough deposit project and where we're going to be going with our small area grant that we received to develop that part of, that section of West Main. So we're going to be working on that. I'm also in the process of working on some new marketing for Main Street in light of what's happening in our current events. We are going to shift our focus a little more heavily. And we're going to be doing some videos, like type of for-life venture spotlight on business, where we'll be going to each retailer. We'll be doing a little one-minute video, you know, sharing what they have to offer. And this is very much going to be geared to prompt our local community to be mindful to support their downtown shops, their small business owners across the board. So those are the projects that we kind of have in the works now.
Are you volunteers doing those videos or do you have a contract?
I have board members that are actually going to be the talent for those videos.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And you'll share those on social?
Yeah, they will be shared on social media as well. And I should be getting the data bonanza, I think I mentioned this last month, but I should soon be getting all of the data bonanza results. But we've already received some preliminary. We had an advanced Main Street directors Zoom meeting last Thursday, and they did share some of the preliminary numbers. And so, as soon as I have all that data, I'll make sure the companies do get in your pocket so that you can actually see where we're performing across the state and, you know, and as a whole. So, but I mean, we're, our Main Street has been performing well. I'm pleased to say.
Good.
And I just want to continue that because there's a lot of uncertainty and a little nervousness out there right now.
I have to ask, it's been a while. So you have any, any update on some of the businesses that we've been anticipating?
No, nothing. Just, you know, we're working toward it is what I keep being told. And one of the owners has started another type of business and so I need to get with him to find out what's going to happen with that as well. Anything that anybody can come up with with nickel, with the McCallum Building in particular, because I've hit a wall. I've exhausted everything that I know to try to reach someone, to even give me an audience. I feel Ms. Corbett's frustration because I too have hit a wall with the folks that I know about. So I hope that we can get those, get movement on those buildings and get, and actually, one of the things that I'm requesting Thursday is the building down on the corner of the former artisans, which now Washington Ward, I'm going to see if we can get a study of what other uses that building could be used for other than a restaurant because it wasn't always a restaurant from what I understand.
Jay, I think LDI did a study, the very thing you're speaking of, they did that like five or six years ago before Washington Ward came in. So a study was done.
Do you recall what the results of that, what their recommendation was? Because I'm sure it would have been Fraser and Associates that would have done it.
Yes, I'm not for sure who did that, but can, I can reach out to Meredith.
I can go back and look in the office and go back and look and see if I can.
Okay, because I believe that same thing was done years ago before, before the current owners now.
Right.
Before they purchased it.
Okay, I'll go back and double check because I have a file folder of those.
Okay.
And I don't remember seeing it, but that doesn't mean it can't be.
Okay, and I believe I'm right with that.
There it is.
I think it was a comprehensive study, wasn't it?
May 29th, 2019. I'll send it to you now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's done.
Was it singly on that property or was it, it included multiple properties, the assessment?
No, this is.
It was strictly on that property?
They got a grant specific to that building.
Yes, yes, we did that, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's good. And I thank you for saying that to me, Joe.
And I can tell you, it was originally McKay's Drugstore.
Okay, I thought it was a drugstore, but I wasn't sure.
It was H.R. McKay's Drugstore. Then the drugstore moved to the Y Building, which was torn down to build the Loray National Bank.
Have you been able to maintain rapport with the, with the owners of Washington Ward? No.
I've had a few email exchanges, but that's pretty much the limit. I've had a couple of exchanges with the realistic firm, but that's, yeah. And I've had a few people that have looked at the property that have come to see me at the LDI office to talk with me about doing business in the way. And of course, the biggest thing that I'm hearing, pretty much the same thing from every person that's shown an interest in it, it's the price. You know, they're just, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about. I mean, they've put such an ungodly amount of money into the building that they probably want to get that back, which is going to make it tough on the market.
Yeah. And with our community development loan, they, the Blue Ridge Bank does have that. We'll probably be getting that in the next couple of days. And then at that point, it'll go to Ms. Bab and it'll go to Mr. Watkins. They'll review it. And that, hopefully, if everything goes the way it should, we should be able to have that for you guys, for your eyes on the March 20, is it 25th?
25th.
Yes.
For you guys to take a look at. And then we can get that up and going. And we still have availability for another one. So if someone would come to us in the interest, we could definitely work with them.
Any prospects on the property for Hen House when they vacate?
Actually, Barbie and I have been talking with a lady. Don't know if that's going to work out, but yeah, Barbie and I have been talking quite a bit on what we're going to do in there. And also, the art gallery, you know, because now the, all of the artisans have moved to art space out onto 11. And so that space is available and the porters want to keep an artist in. They want to continue with their artwork because their artwork is in there. So they want someone that can come in and kind of run the business where their artwork is still for sale and there's, but that artist can have their work in there as well. So we're hoping that we're going to be able to have someone who can take advantage.
Very good. Council, anything else?
I've got one. Can you send me an email with future meeting dates? I don't have a count.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. If I don't plug that in, when they do roll around, I'll try to avoid the conflict. So, thank you.
Thank you for trying on bucks and mick or mac. I know it's tough.
I just keep on praying that something's going to happen.
No doubt.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Thank you, Jackie. All right, no public hearings tonight. Discussion items, wastewater treatment plant, sludge press, and UVA light upgrades. Mr. Grisman?
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, council is staff report outlining the two issues. Try to drill down the things that are probably the most critical. Backing that up is a summary of the different technology types for the sludge press components. First one on page one is currently the technology that we currently have in the plant. And we also looked at the disc group on page one. Probably the ideal scenario would be the centrifuge at the top of page two. As John recommends, you know, if money was really not an object and we could put two centrifuges down there, that would be the end-all, be-all for the plant for the next probably 30, 40 years. However, we'd have to change plumbing, we'd have to change access points, we'd have to change electrical, we'd have to change a lot of things to get that new technology in there. So therefore, based on that solution, they were not really impressed with the rotary fan models, either the two or three channel. So he did a summary on the back of the last page and, you know, the GSM project, which is the existing belt press. So basically, those presses would be rebuilt all the way down to the frame. Everything would be new except for the frames themselves. So they'd be two branding units. One of the big advantages to this, not only is price, but in speed in which they can do it. They can rebuild the one press while the other press is operating and then rebuild the second press. At the end of the project, you end up with two independent presses which can be run while the other unit is being repaired or maintenance or whatever like that. All this other technology that's listed here is just one unit. So if that unit has to go down for repair or replacement, you have no sludge processing during that time. There is an additional page from wood equipment to not only replace the existing pump that was taken out, the second pump, but also to replace the 30-plus-year-old sludge pump that's there now. And that price is listed there. In terms of the overall budget, we did include some funds. Not only, these are just pumps and the sleeves and the attached hardware. So we'd have to have like glove brothers, some of that come in and actually call that up. Some of that we can do ourselves, but some of it's fairly technical. We'd have to re-plug some things still pipe. So all of that is there for the sludge press technology. John, I think did a great job looking at a bunch of different technologies that are available, you know, to us. And I think in the end, that's probably the best solution. You know, ideally, love to have centrifuges down there that are much more efficient. They use a lot less polymer. And putting in new pumps with VFD controls will make our current usage much more efficient. We'll be able to match the pump speed to the press speed, which right now they're totally different. So it will allow us to do some changes there. The second part is the UV light, which is our final disinfection step before it gets discharged into the hogsbill. Currently, we advocate it on the system down there, but it's 40-plus years old. So it's in need of doing some significant replacement components in looking at that, the one picture which I was going to show you. So John's summary was in bold at the bottom of the last page, which was here. So here he talks about the pros and cons of all of them and then he makes a recommendation down at the bottom. Wood equipment, their proposal is here. So one pump is 31, two pumps is 59. That's just pumps and fittings. So those are an essential part of the upgrade. This is the system that we have currently. Kingdom is out of Houston, Texas. The KDIN program is built for our level of flow, including our max overflow. So in looking at the units, currently, we do not have the items in this screen. We do not have the control panel components. We have the lower cabinets, but we do not have the upper panel control units. So that's the new technology that KDIN has come out with to make their UV lights, the flow and intensity match your effluent stream, which is a big savings. So the channels look like this. And so the units drop down in here vertically. In fact, this green right here that you can see in that photo, that's actually the UV tubes in that channel that are actually low at that time. And then here's your back pressure plates and then there's your release. So in looking at some of the options that are available, you know, there's the top of one of the heads. So at the top of each one of these green things is a UV light tube that goes vertically down into the stream channel. That's an independent module. We have six modules. There's a side view of the module without the tubes in place. Right here, the tubes fit in that vertical area. And there are the control cabinets inside and outside. The issue is, is that these units can be hooked into the plant's SCADA system with a PLC, which is right here. So you have a programmable logic controller on the face of each one of those two controllers. Each three, each of the three units gets its own controller panel. So they, each three gets one of these. And we're able to not only handle the programming at a glance, see where our issues are, if we have any, but it also links to the plant's signal control string. And then here are some sample screens that we get. Tells you the number of hours that are remaining, allows us to be a lot more efficient with our repairs. So keeping some spare crystal sleeves, keeping some spare bulbs and some spare ends that seal up on hand as well as a single ballast. A ballast for each unit is $825. So we'll probably just keep one of those on hand and then maybe half a dozen of the other items. We have a full warranty over the whole program for at least first year. They do offer a four- to five-year maintenance plan. After that, we would pay by the year for that maintenance, which would, once we get past the warranty stage, it covers 100% of all costs. So those are the options with Kingdom Technology Services for our UV. Both of these operations, as I mentioned in the staff report, essential to functioning the wastewater plant and to be able, for us to be able to meet our permit requirements and for us to be able to operate the plant efficiently and effectively. So it allows for, in most normal flow situations, single pass treatment, we don't have to recycle a bunch. When we have to recycle, that means pump costs and electrical costs and staff costs and everything goes up once we have to recycle or reuse. So we try to limit that volume as much as possible. And then, of course, obviously, our UV light, that's the dead last treatment that we do before that gets just charged back into the service floor. So it's essential that we keep those units operating well. Right now, we're doing okay with what we have. We're down to a single channel right now, but it's enough to handle the daily flows of the plant. Plant's designed for a lot more flow than we're actually putting through it. It's not on our permit, but it is on our permit. Plant is not permitted. So we will have that in terms of our paperwork. We do have that capacity. But in order for us to reach that, DEQ is going to make us do a couple of additional things. So probably put in a third ditch or turn it into a denitrification type plant. So this is just a discussion item. Want to get this on your windshield. These two combined are roughly going to get equal to that dollar amount that's there at the bottom of the summary report. They're not inexpensive. Nothing that we touched down there seemingly is inexpensive. I haven't found anything yet that's been, that's been fairly economical. But these are probably the best options that we have. So this will come back to you at a later date for action. We're going to refine a few more things. The good news is we don't need the flow meter pump, which was, or the flow meter itself, which was on the Kingdom Technology Services, was like $17,000. And we don't need the UVT meter. If we're able to put in the PLCs, we can actually hook in an electronic meter ourselves. We won't have to buy that $40,000 unit. So it's quite a savings there.
And that's not included in what you've got, the number under the physical impact?
No, the 365 is below that. Those are both two optional meters. We found out reasonably we just don't really need any more. So, you know, hopefully these tops will be back to you at some point in the future. Obviously, we would rather do them sooner rather than later, but it is a lot of money and we will have to stretch that out. So currently getting some financing options from a couple of leading institutions just to see what that picture looks like in terms of, say, we're able to get seven-year money or 10-year money. If we're able to spread that out, rates are higher right now. You know, we're going to be seeing somewhere around 6 and 3/4 percent, not like the 3% that we were seeing there for months. So, but for something like this, it's a million bucks any way you look at it. You know, it's, you cut it a bunch of different ways, but it always ends up the same number. So we're very close to the same number. So we're looking at one of the potential option there with centrifuge, but again, that's a, it's a 50% unit solution. We only get one unit versus two. So not sure of that. If we were to totally rebuild both of those belt presses and hook them up to pumps that actually work and that we can control the speeds, you know, command our SCADA, that's probably a 20 to 30-year solution for the plant, which is a good long time. We can pay it off in 10 years and it lasts, you know, 10, 10 or 20 more years after that, we've probably done a good investment. So anyway, be back in touch with them if you have any questions to be had.
Good information to share. Thank you. Do you think it'll come back in April for a decision?
I want to try to get it done by then. Jason, did you have a?
Yeah, my question was just the, knowing the condition of this and what, that everything's functioning as we speak and working, but the one existing press go down, what's our situation with?
If that press goes down, we get to pay for a company to come in and pump out liquids and solids and haul them out of here. And that's hugely expensive.
Yeah, so, right.
Hugely expensive.
So we don't have much time. Even though everything's working, the risk of a failure without an existing backup, other than outside contractor?
Correct.
That's our, that's our backup as we speak now, should something fail. It's urgent.
What does hugely expensive mean?
Hugely expensive means, based on our volume of flows on a normal rate, we could see $50,000 in a typical quarter that we would pay to pump it out.
If we had to pump it.
So it's easily $200,000 a year just to, just to pump and haul, easily.
Still haven't fixed anything that we have.
Depending upon rates and fuel and how much flow we put through the plant, it could be, you know, up to 50% more than that. It just depends on how much flow we have. So the services are out there. They're not services that we really financially or operationally would prefer to go to, but they are there.
Brian, a bigger question. I'm glad to see that we're doing the things, I'm sure we'll vote to do this, to keep everything up to par. But it's a lot of money. And I'm wondering, is the overall plant near its end of its life? Are we going to see this again in another year?
No, I think, Ron, you know, when they did the upgrade in 2011 to meet tertiary treatment standards, to meet Chesapeake Bay criteria.
Okay.
There were some elements of the plant that were not touched with that upgrade. Sludge press was one of them. As you guys were down there, some of you were down there. Septage was not one of them that they touched. UV disinfection was not one of them.
So we're just doing the things that haven't been done?
The things that haven't been done. And, you know, some of this technology is 1978 technology, you know, and we've gotten a good long run out of it, you know, and no doubt about it. But there comes a time when we have to pay the fine and unfortunately, some of these things are going to land in our lap during our tenure here. So we're going to try to be as effective and efficient as we can. We're going to try to offer up solutions that are the best bang and buck. They might not be the greatest thing going, which in this case would be the centrifuge unit, but operationally, they will buy us a lot more time and they will give us a lot more capacity. And they're fairly easy to maintain. Keeping some spare parts on hand would be a great thing. And we're going to start doing that for all of our elements at all of our plants, actually. So I don't want things, you know, I don't want to be the guy that people talk about 20 years from now. You know, say the guy never planned for anything, you know. Town's in terrible shape. You know, we should, just want something to think. So we want to have some spare parts. We want to teach our people how to use those and install those to save our installation costs. But getting them back from 78 technology to now and then moving forward, I think if these units are properly serviced and maintenance, you know, we may get more than 30 years out, you know, if they're properly maintained with good parts of the building.
When you speak of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The last, the overall capacity, as we grow and the more houses come online, at what point do we have to have another plant? What kind of landlocked back there aren't we?
We are. You know, we have a little bit of area that we can expand. What's going to have to happen, and we just got the report in this last week. So I had Wendell Corporation come in and do evaluation of the operations of our plant. And, you know, one of the biggest things that older plants do is they take their open oxidation ditches, you know, circulating ditches. We have two of them down there, two big concrete ditches that have baps in them. They take those from a straight oxidation ditch and turn it into a denitrification plant. So each one of those ditches becomes a different technology. You handle the effluent differently. You inject different polymer into there and then you skim that off. It improves the efficiency of the plant. So we can maybe build some efficiency. So we can maybe build some efficiency and still keep our high water quality levels for discharge just by changing our operations, how we use the facilities. We have to modify them someplace. But if we can work within our existing footprint or nearly within our existing footprint, you know, one of the things was they had two digesters up on top of the hill. They were put in when the plant was built. They never rehabbed them to utilize the existing digestive component because they were upgraded. So you have to pump, you have to put it up there and then the gravity beats back into the system. We want to reengage them because that buys us operational capacity. So John and his guys have already started. We're doing temporary fix now, but we'd like to reintegrate those into the plant permanently. They were put there for a reason and the reason's obvious. Not sure why we ever stopped using them, but we're going to try to reuse them again because they just help out.
One last question I have. When you speak of existing frames, and I can't get this image in my head. I mean, I've got something, but I'm sure it's wrong, what's really there. Are we talking about a structure that will also extend this thirty-year period that we're estimating? Where, you know, when I hear that, I'm thinking of, I'm assuming steel frame or some type of steel structure. I think down there with corrosion and I know what you see at that plant or any wastewater treatment plant is the life of that. When I was reading that, or you even mentioned it about these going to existing frames, I'm just curious, will the frame last the life of the new equipment?
As far as we can tell, the frames are actually in better shape than any other part of the equipment.
Okay.
Rollers have gone, the belts have gone, the keepers have gone on the end. So if you can think of a big, a roller assembly where they unload trucks at seven eleven, where they send the boxes flying out through there, all they've got all those main rules, something like that, but it's a little bit bigger and it does slightly reconfigure. But that's the type of thing. And so the channels that hold the rollers and then the frames that support those channels, they can be blasted and power coated when that, when that one is not running.
Okay.
We can take that unit down and sampleize that thing and power coat it or spray it and then put that unit back into action and do the same thing for the other side frame.
Very good.
There are ways that we can maintain that.
Right, right. And I was certain you had that, you looked it by the back, but I had to ask the question because I'm thinking.
John says, please calm down. He'll show you where all these things are, kind of show what they look like. And, you know, the picture's just a lie. But a lot of times you can see for yourself it's important. But he says, you know, there's a standing invitation there for any of you. But it's not something that we enjoy, but we do have a responsibility to do the right thing.
It's one of the most critical services we provide.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? Thank you, Brian, for, and I'm happy to hear about that assessment with Wendell. Okay, all right. Next, we have Lake Arrowhead supplemental budget. Ms. Jenkins?
Good evening.
So in your packet, you will see a budget number request as well as a layout for maybe some high-end revenue estimates. And I can explain a little bit about where I got those numbers from and all of this pertains to the proposed operational plan for Lake Arrowhead this upcoming year. We're going to pass these out. This is, each year, we do Lake Arrowhead brochure just basic information and fees and that sort of thing. And so part of that is a map. And so according to this proposed plan, we did some updates to that. In the back of that, you'll also see the guard shack, the new guard shack design. So I'll pass those around. You know, I think fortunately for us, most of these expenses are one-time costs. Basically, the installation of the facilities and services. I pulled Saturday and Sunday data from the last full season that we had worked in the lake. And that was actually two thousand twenty-two. We had started operations normally in two thousand twenty-three and things fell apart pretty quickly there. So I looked at Saturdays and Sundays during our beach operation and pulled up where those numbers came from. We also have a slight increase in the swimming fee usage within, instead of being five dollars versus six, five and seven. As we had discussed, town-lure residents would not, they're going to be pursuing. I guess one of the things I would just like to point out is that most of this is somewhat time-sensitive. The building does reflect a fifteen percent discount, which ends at the end of this month. And there is a six-week time on construction of the guard shack. And so the earliest consideration that we can make in this process is how we collect and receive the beach. We appreciate the more way to hit around Ron and the standards.
Okay. Counsel, do you all have any questions, comments for Dan?
Jen, I've got some questions. And let me say before I ask these questions, it's not a, it's not an attack. I just want to make sure that this is making sense. And you're doing exactly, a couple of years ago, counsel, you know, pitched this idea to you to, hey, search and see what ways we can generate some type of revenue to help offset our costs.
Yes.
And I appreciate all that you've done and where we're at at this point. A couple of questions that I have. I know staffing's been a problem for years, ever since I've been on council. So whether it's lifeguards or whether it's just employees in general there or whatnot, the questions I have is just like, you know, when I see two guard shacks, you know, what's your feeling on the, your honest opinion of what challenges might we face in even staffing these guard shacks?
Sure.
And, and the other thing I'm wondering too, is we enter into the fees now. Is Jason still with us?
Yes, he is.
Okay. You know, we went with a, most of last year, correct me if I'm wrong, the sort of swim at your own risk and no lifeguard there. And problems over the years is cannot find certified lifeguards, people wanting to work. I'm wondering where we're at at the legal point now. If we're charging fees to swim, but we don't provide that lifeguard service, number one, is that permissible? Number two, if it is, are we, are we on a slippery slope even venturing into that? And that's where I didn't know if Jason was still with us, if he might know on that. Or I think that would be something that we'd need to know.
And I think we asked that question. We asked, as things continue to evolve over the past few years, the guidance that we got from Versa was the worst thing we could do is to have lifeguard staff on duty collecting and selling concessions and not on the stand. So when we were providing lifeguard staff, when we were committed to that, we would have to forego admissions if that's what it took to provide public safety. And from, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, because we have, we did look at that. Can we charge an admission if we're not providing lifeguard services? And we, there was no, we didn't have any concerns or red flags that came up on that from Versa. We did, because things kind of changed. We were asking those questions as our staff numbers were dwindling to the point where we may not have a situation where we could cover those things.
Jason, did you hear that question?
Yes, sir. That's consistent with my recollection as well. I think charging a general admission fee is a little bit different than charging specifically a swimming fee. And I agree that charging this fee for swimming gives the residents who's paying that fee the ability to expect that the condition that there's going to be reasonable safety measures there that are observed for their protection. So charging a swimming fee does, I think, subject the talent to a more strict standard of liability than it would otherwise have without charging those fees.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. That was my concern when I looked at this. And it just hit me actually yesterday when I was reviewing all the packing and looking at it. And like I say, staffing had been on my mind as far as the challenges. As we add more, and I realize this cannot operate. We can't operate something and collect fees or revenues if there's not staff there to accept it or collect, you know. Unless it's some automatic gate and a card or something, you know. But we weren't going down that road. But that was on my mind. And then the lifeguard issue, heavy concern too, so.
Sure. Let me explain what our proposal is for staffing levels so that, you know, you can ask me some follow-up questions. So last year, we kind of ran staffing. We have one weekend, dedicated weekend staff and then our staff filled in as needed. So we had three there last season on Saturdays and Sundays. This year's plan would include two, three staff total. Two would be town-lure staff and one would be contracted security staffing from Securacasa. Boad has helped us find a good contact for them. We've had some good conversations, incorporated their rates, their hourly rates into this plan. So in instances in which the weekend staff wouldn't be available, our staff could fill in as needed. We did last year. That's just, it's just what it took. And I think we headed into last year thinking that we could do it with two staff and in reality, we need the three. So I think the most intensive part of it would be the beach admissions. You know, so I would foresee our staff rotating through there quite frequently so you didn't get burnout doing that in that, you know, small building down on the beach. So it helps the day go by faster if you get a little bit of a worsening in your tasks. The job is posted, the jobs are posted. We'll be attending the job fair on Thursday at Laurel Ridge as well. So, I mean, at the end of the day, you're right. If no one applies, if we can't find staffing, then it's dead in the water, you know.
Well, I mean, I'm sure we'll have applicants. I'm just wondering, once, once we make an investment such as this, there, if we're not staffing it, then we're not getting any return or trying to even somewhat cover our costs.
I really see, you know, and I definitely see the need to get back to, you know, collecting the swim fees. That's a great revenue source that captures the audience that's there, that's coming in specifically for that. I think one of the overall benefits of this is having the guard shack in the top shelter area. Because I think that's where we were seeing an inundation, an overuse of facilities. It caused us to actually have to close the restroom facilities because they were, they were backing up and way over capacity. We did a hybrid plan last year. We brought in some additional portable toilets. And our goal this year is to keep our restrooms open with our staff being there, right? We have someone to keep an eye on that. And then also include two additional portable restrooms. One at the Lion Shelter and one at, as I just said, Monqueville. The walk to the restroom could be a little bit of an inconvenience.
So you're already there pointing out some areas of savings. It's offsetting a good portion of this cost.
Exactly, yeah.
Because I walked into the bathroom, so I saw there was some money that had to be put into that thing.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, when you, when you don't have a presence there, it develops a reputation of you can come and do what you want to do. And we saw great success last year just having one or two staff. It's a presence and it's, and I think we had a good reset last year. Danielle's been tremendously helpful in helping us work through the payment terminals. It would allow us to rent shelters that were open and re-rent shelters on Saturdays and Sundays. It would allow us to sell fishing permits and boating permits, season passes, things that in the past have been difficult to obtain. You know, you get to the lake, you realize you need fishing from it, but we run back into town and get that. So just having the staff there to assist in that way. I think it was successful last year and we struggled last year because you really can't do this with one person. I, I feel confident in this. I feel that, you know, even when we had the beach open, there were some, there were some days where we were struggling to run lifeguards and we still managed to do the swimming collection and concessions and boat rentals, you know. So I think the key to this is going to hinge on well-trained, responsible staff, hiring the right people for those positions. An updated and rolled-out plan with appropriate signage and public messaging so that folks know what to expect when they get there. And, you know, I think we do a good job of kind of adapting on the fly too. You know, there would be some, you know, blurring curves, growth pains in this. But I feel confident in the plan. I think we can do it with three staff. Having the contracted security staff takes the relief off of our seasonal staff to make what could be an uncomfortable conversation. You know, it's never super easy to approach someone who's bringing, you know, a lot of items.
I want to interject for a second. It seems like what we talked about for the last couple of years was, it all started with the big crowd problem in the summertime on weekends. And then we asked you to look into how we get some revenue. Well, I know I've read that now we have internet there, Starlink or something. And so you talk about these squares, you can, you know, use debit cards. I'm all for all that. I want you to remember that we were very concerned that the town residents got a better deal than everybody else since they're the ones paying for it. So if you have that situation and you can rent, you know, it's easier to have a town fee and, you know, and then they could show their license to the person. I don't mind buying two guard shacks. I mean, that's not something that, they'll probably be able to be moved if you decide five years from now you don't want them. It's not like it's a permanent structure, is it?
No. And in fact, we're only buying one. So our goal is to take the old, larger guard shack and retrofit that with normal doors instead of garage doors. Just retrofit that and go and put that in the upper area. The smaller one, the eight-by-eight, would be on the skid. We could remove it, which is very important for anything that goes down in the beach areas that it is removable.
So remember when you talked to us about a cage system and some company wanted to come in and rent paddle boards twenty-four-seven? Would that be a possibility?
It is. And I think in order for us to pursue that, we would need to do a franchise agreement. I have been contacted by two different companies that do kayak lessons and probably paddle boards. I, so those companies are out there. And, you know, with the updated, the only contingency though is that the current internet service would not be available to the general public. And that is because they would overload it to the point where our security cameras wouldn't.
So we just have limited internet? We just have limited internet at the lake right now?
We do. And it works. It works great. And part of this proposal is included with valley automation and VTG to put the antennas there to relay the Wi-Fi down to the beach.
Okay.
What else is included is an additional security camera at the beach and then everything operational that we need to have, you know, a good connection at both locations.
Well, I appreciate the time and effort you've put in all this.
Yeah, this is great. I do have a couple of quick questions, though. On your staffing costs, it says to cover the rest of physically year twenty-five. Those two numbers do not add up to your total. Four thousand four hundred plus four thousand one hundred and eighty doesn't add up to eight thousand one hundred and forty?
Eighty-five, eighty.
Yeah. Should be eighty-five.
Sorry.
Yeah. And this is a request for additional funds. Was there anything already in the budget for staffing up there?
I don't know where we stand with that. I do know that there was some TOT funding that helped support some of the staff from last year.
We did have, we were able to reallocate some of those funds toward our per county seasonal staff that did cover the lake last year. So we would have some funds available, which I think you mentioned earlier. These are probably a little bit on the high side maybe, just to be, you know, overly cautious there. I do think, you know, we obviously have budgeted. just to be, you know, overly cautious there. I do think, you know, we obviously have budgeted salary-wise for any of our part-timers that would be returning for the season that would fall into that May-June timeframe. And then with those other costs being offset, I mean, I feel like with the RBC, other than the contract, these would show up in the budget.
So your estimates here for the expense and then projected revenues, excuse me, it's give or take seven grand, but that doesn't include the increased stability. It's not taken into any consideration now with the shelter and the ability to do?
No, it does not.
So there's a potential revenue gain opportunity there that's not even being included here?
Yes. That estimated revenue was just from swim fees. That did not include boating, fishing permits, or additional shelter rentals.
Yeah. I think we'll see a significant increase in that, having it readily available there.
I think, you know, one thing that we hear every season, you know, folks may decide at the last minute they would like a shelter, they would need to do that here. And if we are closed and there is that availability, you know, we can capture that sale at the lake, you know, on the weekend. The other thing we often hear is, well, you know, I would like to get a fishing permit, but we only have a few locations that sell them right now, that being Town Office and I believe grocery store is selling them as well. So currently at the lake, that's an inconvenience to come back into town and get that. So having that ability is as good as well.
There may be also some instances in which someone had intended on using a shelter in the morning. The goal is to have shelter renters, whoever, you know, has signed the special event permit, to actually check in to the guard shack. Or our staff, if it doesn't happen, our guard staff can go meet and greet them and check them in, make sure that everyone is settled in and they have the appropriate shelter. And then if that party vacates the premises early, then it opens it back up to re-rental. You know, obviously, if it's late in the afternoon, we wouldn't charge them, you know, full rental fee. But, you know, it just, it does open up some additional.
And that's a big part we've been lacking up there, correct? That as far as anyone even physically there to see to manage these shelters or see that that's going on like that?
It is. And things totally changed everything for us up there. It changed everything, and then it developed a really good reputation for being the place to come. And then we were just inundated, right? We had way more people up there than what the facilities could even handle. So having someone there is really, at least for park management operations, that is key, right? Because the issues that you're having are really hard to handle after it's already occurring or an hour after it occurred, and they're still doing it.
If you deal with it at the start of it, it's easy.
It is.
Than to try and go in and correct it after it's already going on.
It cuts down on the negative interactions, and that's stressful for staff. You know, they're not trained really in dealing with.
Have we ever in the past, do we have a sign or like the little sawhorse thing we move in if the park's full? Do we ever determine that that's full?
So two years ago, we discussed maximum occupancy at the lake. When our parking area would be full, you know, we would have to then start thinking about how many more people are we going to want in. Brian and I had a good discussion, and we would also like to implement a beach maximum capacity. I have, which I'm happy to share, sign proofs, that is part of one of the sign proofs, a large beach max-capacity sign, one that we could put at the front of the park, and one that we could put, you know, down at the lake, at the beach itself. We have in this plan also an expansion to include day-use parking area that would accommodate. So we have four cover picnic shelters there. So our thought for that is that we've purchased additional grills. So each of those picnic shelters has a small grill, that those would be first comes, first served. You could still fill out the special event permit, so we would know who was in that shelter with a six-person max occupancy and no fee for that. The folks who were like, oh, we drove all the way over here. Is there just someplace that we could cook our lunch, right? Within reason, we can also offer that now. And with the expanded day-use parking, it opens the top portion back up to hiking, fishing along the shoreline, and it gives those folks place to park that doesn't take up parking for the shelters. And we expanded handicap parking as well down at the Lion Shelter. We added two new spots down there.
Well, Jen, you've done everything that I can recall we've asked you to do. I think it's a very thoughtful plan. Appreciate the work that you've done. It seems like it's long overdue. I know you and your staff has been, you know, very diligent about being out there and working it last year, early mornings. I know even yourself being up at the lake on the weekends, and we appreciate the dedication. Does council have any other questions? I know that you had mentioned about the time for construction delivery and thinking about the timeline for the beach opening. And so while we're not, wasn't the plan tonight to take action on this, the council could certainly do so. Is that right, Mr. Kressman? And Jen had reached out to me prior to the meeting just to kind of reiterate the need to be thoughtful about the timeline, particularly with the new build for?
Yeah. And the building has a $500, it's a $500 discount. So to me, on a, you know, a $3,000 building, that's.
That's a good chunk.
So obviously, this is, I don't mean to pressure at all, and we will certainly, if this didn't go to a vote, we would still make it happen, you know. But I just want you to know that that is an option until the end of the month as well.
I think it would probably make sense to do something as soon as possible on the building, given the fact there's clearly some questions about, sorry, allergies hit yesterday. Given the fact there's clearly some questions about what of this would be covered in, what we're possibly able to budget for versus what not, I think maybe the rest of it, iron that out a little bit more in the coming budget process might make sense. That's just my take. But I think acting on the beach guard shack to get that discount and get your ball rolling.
Yeah. And other than the staffing costs, you know, I mean, I could work with Brian to see if he wanted me to pull funds from other line items. I am down to not a whole lot left in the lake revenues. We upgraded the fence last year. We purchased some additional refoot grills to accommodate that for our larger shelters. So we have already invested some, you know, most of the portion of the lake operation line item. What was left, I hadn't intended on purchasing gravel. Just every year, we have to refresh the gravel portion that heads down to the lake. So as far as lake operations and funding for what's in here, I don't have really anything to give there. Now, if we were going to pull from some other park facility maintenance, you know, we could look into that. The question would be staffing, and that would be something I could work with Danielle.
Even, we're really only looking at one month for this fiscal year because we're not opening, we're not opening until.
Right. It would be in, yeah.
Gotcha.
In May. Last weekend in May is Memorial Day weekend, and then the weekends through June, I guess. So not a lot of time there. And of course, she does already have, you know, those part-time seasonal folks built into her staffing. And then looking ahead on the budget, those are things that we have considered and included. So I think we feel pretty comfortable with those numbers. I know she's done a really good job to scale back the hours or the amount of seasonal staff and really do the most with the least folks. Yeah.
This year. Yeah. To be mindful. So I feel like those numbers are looking to move in forward. I'm happy to look at that more if you'd like.
And if it makes the most sense to go ahead and do all this tonight, I mean, I'm all for it. I'd make the motion. Do we need to figure out if that total number needs to be corrected for the sake of the record?
We could say.
We're proving up to.
Up to.
So it's not up.
And we'll use exactly what we need, anything we don't need, or anything we can save up this year, this year, you know, the line items. None of us are big fans of doing allocations. If we're able to find the funds anywhere, then we can make it happen. You certainly need to make it happen, so we'll find a way to do that.
It's effectively budget neutral in year one. I mean, after you start, especially after you start looking at this, the other issues we've encountered where you're having to go and clean up a bunch of crap, and, you know, that's all time and money. So it's...
And we'll probably make adjustments to this over the next two, three years till it finally gets tweaked to where like, okay, this is how it should work, or maybe even where stuff's placed, you know, all that other type of stuff, too.
But even with all the hard costs upfront, we're still basically.
We may need additional small signage, right? So I did come up with a number of signs and rules and regulations just directing people when they come into the park, you know, straight ahead, this is where you check in, signs for those guard shacks so that it's kind of, you don't have to search and try to figure out what's going on. So that, you know, in the future, there's always things like that.
Yeah. So Brian, procedurally for a motion, what would you need? Within that, you need up to $40,000 for reserve funding, is that?
I would just say based on the staff report, you know, if you're able to provide, make a motion through up to $40,000 for reserve funding to be added to general fund parks and recreation GLs as needed and appropriate.
That's good enough.
Do you got that? Is that your motion?
Alex, you want to make it since you were talking about it?
I'd like to make a motion for a fiscal year '25 budget amendment for up to $40,000 from reserve funding to be added to the general fund for parks and recreation general ledger line items as appropriate.
I'm checking that.
Ron, thank you. Okay. Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you again, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks for asking.
We are in our temporary office, so I invite you to all come over for a cup of coffee.
What's that?
If there's a place to sit. No, it's fantastic. So please, anytime you're available.
Jen, could you make the guard shack named like information or admin booth or something? Guard just seems kind of...
Oh, I didn't have on, just in my brain, I had nothing else to put.
I don't open that up for the public yet, you know.
Yes, something of the sort, yes.
Okay.
Yogi calls it the ranger stations.
Yeah, Constantino wire.
The wrong ranger station.
Yeah, good thinking, Ron. That's good.
Give my regards to the all-time great Assistant Superintendent Greg Richards.
I will.
I'll second it.
We have a second.
All right, thank you all. All right, moving right along, we have action items next. Lodging house resolution, and...
As mayor and council, so this was something that we talked about last meeting, and you guys went on the action items this time. So here it is.
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, you might recall the discussion that we had, and this doesn't include any changes from that discussion and the work. Okay. So at this time, if council is interested, there's a motion there?
I think that the logic of deferring it was just because Joey wasn't able to be here, and I know the conversation moved a little bit. My position, just as an introduction, is, you know, obviously, this isn't binding. I just think it allows us to, you know, sort of telegraph to people what things are our priorities and what we're thinking about as opposed to this sort of blank slate that we're working off of now, which I think there's an argument to be made that that blank slate's a good thing, but I think in practice, it actually hasn't led us to constrain ourselves at all. And in fact, operating off of the blank slate, we kind of take this weird idea of precedent where we just go and approve everything because something looked like it three months ago. So I think a lot of work has gone into this on the staff side, on the council side, and Joey's taken a real interest in it. I'd like to see us pass it, and I think it sends a message to people that we're really, have tried to do as much on this issue as we can within reason and within the bounds of consensus, so.
Alex, my problem with it is the concept that John Smith is going to come in, and you've done this evaluation, and he's going to say, well, hold it. You gave me a three, and you gave Bill two months ago a five, and mine is just the same as his. And so this isn't fair that you've given me a three instead of the five that you gave the other guy. That's going to open us up for people to come in and contest things. If we, as individual council people, want to do this ourselves, and this is what you're going to use as you're making your decision, I think that's fine. But I don't think we should adopt it as a council that we're going to do this for everybody, and this is what we're going to base our decisions on, because it leaves you open for somebody to come in and contest something.
Yeah, Chuck, you're absolutely right. So when I first put it out there for a review, I put in a scoring rubric. You're correct. But that, based on the legal counsel we received, we were, we were not doing that. Now we're looking at just some guiding principles that even then, they're non-binding. At the end of the day, there's exceptions to rules, right? So they're not, these aren't hard and fast rules. There's not going to be any strict grade that someone's going to receive, but rather, hey, these are some of the things that we value here, and some of the goals we're trying to achieve. So if we keep, let's keep these in mind as we make these decisions. And then each one of us, as you rightly said, if we have something more, one person might have something much more quantitative that they're using. Somebody else might be going by their gut. Somebody else might be talking to neighbors in the area and getting the general sense of it. But, right, but these are some shared principles we have.
Because I would agree. I think sharing, and that was the sense we got from council, I think having any kind of scoring system where there's that kind of, you know, paper trail and level of actually putting a number out there to things, and then people get a little more of a look inside the black box that is all of our minds as we make these decisions. I didn't think that would have been good. I think we moved in the right direction by making this broad statement of principles, because really, these are the principles that I think our constituents have shared. When I've had these conversations with people, they're really worried about proximity, you know, highest and best use of property, all those things that I think are captured in this broad statement of non-binding principles. But, yeah, a grading system, I think, would be a disaster, and we'd literally be asking for like a lawsuit, for sure.
Again, and I understand that there's, I misspoke when I'm saying, talking about the grade. I just, again, I don't think we want to nail something down too solid. You know, we all understand what we're trying to do here. The more you put out there that this is what we're looking at, if you then bring up something else, and I know this is, it's non-binding, but people are going to try to say, oh, no, this is what you told us we're looking for. And at that point, you're kind of locked into something. You know, I think we're much better off having, you know, less rules out there so that we can make individual decisions.
I would almost, to that end, I would almost add like a point six. That's almost like the Ninth Amendment catch-all thing of, and any other principles deemed relevant by council at the time.
He has it under one, one eye. It says, following factors along with any other appropriate land use considerations. So that idea is that...
Does it make it all-inclusive or...
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, we can revise it while we're here. If you see something you want to change within that, it's entirely appropriate.
Well, I'm here, Chuck, but when I see the one through five items, they're still subjective. It is not any particular number. Like, one time, we talked about, this one street has three, you know, B&Bs already. Let's not do a four. That I'm definitely against, like you are. I mean, you just set yourself up. But I'm not so opposed to this resolution. And I was one of the ones that wanted people to have more rights, what they do with their property than the rest of you.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Hi, let me find the motion. I move that the resolution be approved with the following change, and that is I would replace any other appropriate land use considerations with any other considerations deemed appropriate by council, to just make it as broad as possible. And that's my motion.
Sure, I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. Danielle, or any other discussion, sorry.
If Jason's still online, is he, does that sound fine with the change?
Jason, are you okay with that change?
Yes, sir. How comfortable is that amendment?
Okay.
Any other discussion? Here or none. Danielle, will you do oral call, please?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
No.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Great. Mission carries. Next, we have town council appointments, the airport authority and BZA.
I can let you know what I was told. On the airport authority, the town does have the right to have two representatives. And talking to a pal, Mark Woods, we really like the idea of Mark Doffner as the person that has the skills and knowledge that the authority needs. So if you'd like, I would like to put him up for the appointment.
Okay, yeah. So I see the stat memo here says one council member from town council and arrested citizens, Mr. White, Mr. Doffmeyer, or others. How about for the, if it's okay, the Board of Zoning Appeals? We could look at that one as well at the same time.
Remember, that was one that was having a heck of a time. Fines might want to do it. Brian, did you come up with names besides Rick Black? Was there anybody else that we know of?
No, well, Rick is going to be Alex's pre-appointed, Jen, if he wishes, but the only suggestion... only suggestion that I had was that our ordinance does allow one member of the current planning commission to serve on the BZA. So what I was going to recommend is that you maybe contact the planning commission Wednesday night when you guys are here for the...
That's a good idea.
And just see if you have one of those members as one to serve on the BZA. We may meet only once a year, if that, so it would be a really low commitment. So I would recommend that first, you know, the other option that Jason brought up today was, state code allows us to reduce the number of BZA members from seven to five, however, that shorts two of you from the appointment, because then how do we pick who selects the five, you know, so we have to change a few things if we change the number. Right now, it's fairly easy, each, each chair makes the appointment, but if we were to reduce that number, which state law does allow, it, it does change the selection process on how we would have...
I don't think you have people fighting over, clamoring over that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
I can commit right now to giving up my choice.
I would just say, if somebody was to try to get those people together once a year, at most, having more people available to call versus fewer people to be able to call is ideal for me.
Okay, ideal, yeah.
So if we can stay with the seven, and I can only get a quorum, that's much easier. If we drop back to five, then my quorum is fairly significant to still have to call. So if the planning commission thing doesn't pan out maybe on Wednesday, then maybe we could consider someone else, or maybe we consider doing a reduction.
It might be worth asking some of our BZA members currently on there, too, they might know some people interested. I know one I'll reach out to.
Yeah, we had a, we had a BZA earlier, well, I guess it was, was it earlier this year, or was it 2021?
Yeah, it's just been a couple months ago, I feel like.
A couple months ago.
We just did one, and I asked a couple of folks, I said, hey, do you know anybody else that we won't serve? And they're like, other than me, no.
Oh, okay.
So I was like, but I didn't get all of them, because Roseanne wasn't here, and Rick wasn't here. So maybe, you know, I'll certainly reach out to them, or I could reach out to them.
Okay, that sounds good. I reached out to the county and asked the zoning department up there, and they didn't have any recommendations either, for what it's worth. So, okay, well, so Mr. Vickers, would you like to make a motion for...
I move that we make Mark Doffmeyer the Luray County Airport Authority member.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Here none. Danielle, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next, we have FY '25 budget amendment for water and sewer. Mr. Christman?
Thank you, dear. Again, that's something that I really enjoy doing, because, but things come up during the fiscal year that are nearly impossible for us to plan for, and we have a couple situations here that I've outlined, one in the water fund, one in the sewer fund. In terms of, excuse me, in terms of the issues that we need to replace, I've kind of talked about this there, as we realized in January, December, January, the West Main Bus Pump Station is kind of a critical thing when we have a water shortage issue. It has two pump skids in it, one of the skids, we basically probably killed it, just supplying water for that 20 to 30 days a year. So replacing that skid, and then in the next fiscal year, replacing the second skid is going to be really important. We also need to repair the altitude valve, that's the water that, that's the valve that holds the water up in the tank, that's also important. We also have, we need to replace the flow meter there, which locked up, again, I think just due to the log that we were pushing through in the four-hour period. And instead of having to buy a new pump, we're trying to go to pump skids where we can just simply replace the rotating assembly instead of the entire pump. Saves us a lot of money, our staff can do that typically, very easy to do, so new pump technology allows us to do that. So provision of one spare rotating assembly now would be important. When we replace the second skid in next fiscal year, we buy the exact same style pump, so that the rotating assembly could work for either skid one or skid two. Under sewer fund, it's primarily based on the generator component, fairly self-evident there, you know, we've got a 375 cat and a 150 Kohler, and we just put one single 600 KW unit back in there to replace those two. Both of those are older units, and the maintenance cost continues to rise every year. We'd certainly rather maintain one new generator than two old generators, or even two new generators, over the life of their, you know, the course of their lifespan. We're not going to need a whole lot in terms of changed conduits or panels, but there will be some, we will have to expand the pad just a tad, so in terms of us ordering the 600 KW machine, by the time it's available, then we can get these other smaller pads complete. So, again, as we discovered during the power outage, when the tree fell down here at the greenway at the parking lot and took out power 340 north, it also took out 350 power to the plant, two of the three generators fired automatically, one of the transfer switches did not automatically change, that's one we're getting ready to replace. We've already replaced the other one, and the third transfer switch is less than 10 years old. So this will allow us to substitute one new generator with two old ones. So, in the scheme of things, up to $60,000 into the water fund, and up to $60,000 into the sewer fund will allow us to accomplish both of those projects, and of course, we would add them into the water and sewer funds as needed. Obviously, we're not going to transfer any more money than we absolutely have to have, so when we get final invoices in, then those numbers are what Danielle uses to make the actual amendment. Happy to answer any questions.
I've got a question, the, and I know this is a necessity, so I mean, even before I ask this question, we've got to do this, but I have to ask this with, and I was speaking with the mayor earlier, I know in the last four years I've been on council, we've, we've reached into reserves more in the last year than we have the entire time I've been here, and coming to council for about 10 years, I've never seen, actually, where are we at with reserves right now?
Unrestricted reserves, I don't know, Danielle, I mean, I know you just...
I mean, we just did another 40 right here with the...
Statement report. Can we get back to you on that? Because we, we actually need to look at the, at the current budget.
Because I know from our, from the audit...
Yeah.
Which, I mean, I have those numbers here, but that was last year's budget audit, but I can't keep everything in my head from what's been going on here over the last six months.
Look, Jason, I think I remember when I first got on, we had like a million dollars reserve budget, and then recently, it's been like $3 million, so I don't think we're in dire strait chat.
We're at 2.8.
2.8.
You know, our basic funds that are available have actually gone up over the last three, four, so.
Okay, I'd seen increases in that, but I know we've been tapping into it, too.
We've been taking money back and forth, and so, you know, when you have an operational budget of, when you have a, a reserve of, say, 3.6, 3.7 million, but you have a budget, an annual budget of 12 to 14 billion, that's a lot of money going in and coming back out, you know, again, to make that thing happen.
Yeah.
So we'll get you a firm number tomorrow, but...
Well, you're, we're in the ballpark of what, and I just needed to ask that question tonight, because it's been, and I'm sorry I didn't ask it before tonight, I should have called in earlier and inquired, because...
The thing is, is that it is something that I do not enjoy doing, you know?
Yeah.
Now, when we adopt the budget, that's exactly what we're doing, we're taking some of those reserve monies, we're obligated, because not all the money comes on the door, pays for everything that goes back out. So some of the money, we do have to use reserves for, but...
And, and this is exactly what, when we do spend it, this is exactly what we need to be spending it on, so when, when huge systems are failing and it's unexpected, that's, that's why it's there, but I just wanted to ask, so, thank you.
Yeah, I understand, and you have a great question to ask. Again, not a huge fan of doing mid-year adjustments, because they can only come from one place, they come from that reserve bottom line.
Yes, yes.
And I, I don't like doing that. If it was up to me, we'd have $5 million reserve, but no, people are in and were killing for that, so.
Well, we don't want to do that, I remember Joey saying before, I mean, it's not fair to the taxpayers.
Correct.
It shows that we're overtaxing our citizens if we've got those type of reserves.
Yeah.
So we need to have that balance, but have that emergency fund that can handle things such as what we're talking about tonight, but we can only go to that well so many times and...
Yeah, I do kind of see it as a healthy sign, though, on the other hand, though, it shows that we're not building a bunch of fat into the budget to such an extent that he can't just find a quick six-figure budget somewhere, you know?
Right.
Within the budget, so.
If I had the ability to do that, I would just believe...
I'm sure, yes, I'm sure you would love to be able to do that, but, but to run it tight, you're running the tight budget, and then, then when these things come before us, then we know, right? Instead of just...
It's a great point. I don't like doing it, but it is necessary sometimes, so I'm here asking.
Yeah, we've got to ask, too, so thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Wonderful. All right.
Okay, council, any other questions?
Well, I move that the council approve the two fiscal year 25 budget amendments as presented.
I'll second that.
First and a second, any other discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we stop spending money now tonight? Please.
Yeah, can that be...
Please, please, sir.
It's hard to run a...
I know. The trash can here is empty.
Okay, next, we have closed meeting, do we, you all want to recess, or can we just